Okay. We're calling the voting on the voter stuff from September 8, 2020 to order. Again, we tried a few minutes ago, had to wait for audio. Can we roll call, please?
Yes, present this evening, Mr. Slavin, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Munees, Mr. Titlebaum, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Bowen.
Okay, pledge of allegiance. Jackie.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To your republic, for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. Now.
Okay. I'll read a couple of things. It has to do with Route 6 and 28 repair work. I believe everybody got forwarded one of the letters. Michael McGrath, who is the chief engineer for the project, just wanted to pass on these responses to the letters you delivered to the district office. Hard copies go out by mail. Just thought you might want an advance copy. Hope things are improving the project. I haven't heard any new feedback. We have progress scheduled for a meeting tomorrow. If you have any concerns that you would like me to bring up, please let me know. And, let's see. Basically, the letter, everybody got in their packet today, explained that Mary Jo Perry, who is basically the executive director for Mass DOT 5, had serious meetings with the contractor about the issues, and she's promising that these issues will not only be resolved, but they won't happen again. So, we've gone as far as we can go, and if there's any more issues, there's going to be some serious problems for landers.
No. You good now? Okay. Yeah, I read the letter, and I just wanted to thank you and Selectment Tropiano for, you know, making that happen. And I'm glad that they're taking the complaints of the business owners seriously.
Well, I forward whatever came to me.
Yep. I haven't been down there for about a week, but about a week ago, it seemed like it was better.
They didn't finish the road, but they went back and smoothed the road out so you don't lose your suspension going down the road.
Yeah, it wasn't as bumpy.
And they're working the four days a week, and they're closing about 4:00 in the afternoon. So, they're trying now.
Yep. Well, thank you again for your outreach there. Anything else?
Enough of that section.
Okay. Judy.
The only announcement I have is that the Charter Review Group has a workshop scheduled for the 14th of September. It will be by Zoom at 6:30. It's already been posted.
Yidok. Jim?
No, I'll do it in liaisons.
Okay.
And comments.
Just as a general announcement, the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting opens on Friday, the 11th, and it closes on the 22nd. So, just a reminder that that's taking place. We've already taken all the steps we need to do. The warrant just needs to be posted by the constable, literally on the bulletin board, and that's the step that we need to take. It needs to be posted on the website. And that's what the charter change that went through a little while ago, a year ago, I think. That's all that that requires. There's no more publication requirement. So, that's how you find out about the warrant now. And obviously, next week and the week after, we're going to be consumed, spending a lot of time going through the articles, voting to put them on the warrants or not, as the case may be. So, that's going to be the focus of this board for the next couple of weeks. And I think that's about it. I don't have anything. Citizens' comments. Two citizens. We'll start with Don.
Don Jepson. I was here three weeks ago and asked some questions about energy aggregation, and Jim and Eze gave me some advice as to where to find to get the information, because I mentioned that what happened to me, not here, was through Eversource, as I went with another company back in 2012. And they were giving free air miles. It cost me about $450 to learn that experience. And so, anyway, Jim gave me direction as to where I could get the information. So, I followed up with Eversource, and they gave me what their figures were. DynaG is obviously off the bills that I have, plus what was written originally. The report, if you want, I can hand it out. It's favorable through the end of the year. There's a couple of months, as you said in the beginning, it was a little rocky, and then it got better. And now it's getting rockier again. But that's the way the rates go. It's not anything that DynaG can control, because they had a fixed rate. If you want, I can hand these out, because I think it's helpful to people who are trying to make a decision as to whether they want to continue.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, but anyway, your advice was spot on.
Thanks. Take it on.
The integrity of this, and flying blind, I'm sure a lot of people that didn't sign up for it or didn't sign up for it are wondering where they stand, because it takes a little time to dig in to find it. But the situation is, and I'm not totally clear how you qualify for a fixed rate through Eversource, but they also have a variable rate. But when you compare them against what DynaG has charged, if you look through the end of the year, it basically, you're ahead, you know, 6.8 cents against the variable, against the fixed. It's not quite as good, but I don't know how you get the fixed. Whenever I talked to them, they told me, they were trying to give me the rates that were fixed, that weren't fixed, and the variables that weren't. But, you know, I got the best information I could get.
Okay.
But anyways, it's a positive situation. One of the questions I had, what goes back to 2017 before this program came in, was just a simple question, because I know you were held up with the legislature trying to get that through, and there were other towns that...
No, we were held up because we had to go to town meeting for the town to vote whether they wanted to get an energy aggregation program at all. So, by the time it went through town meeting, we missed the opportunity to be with our SEREP Ed group that had 23 or 24 members. So, we ended up with only five members in our group, which doesn't give us a lot of leverage.
Okay. Because it, as I said, it's a positive program. I have to say that I looked at what were the projections out for the rest of the year, and I kind of opted out. But that doesn't mean I won't opt in again, once we know in January what DynaG is offering. But as I said, I got burned once, and so I was flying blind. And Jim gave me where to get some of the information, so that was a real plus.
Is that...
The other thing, I just, it was about a month ago. I went on longer than I should have on what was going on with the dredging thing with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, what was going on, what the plans are from here forward. And I'm just, basically, I was told by the Army Corps of Engineers that they will not answer to me again, because they were told not to, and that I should talk to the town. So, I don't know if you have anything to add to what we were...
Don, I don't. Are you asking for me to add to what the Army Corps said?
Oh, he wanted to know if we had anything to add to what the Army Corps said.
What's your name?
He wanted to know if we had anything to add about...
Well, what I wanted to know was, when Derek and I talked, we found out that basically, what Derek had agreed to, and I had the money is there. It's just a question of, the Army Corps of Engineers sounded like they were moving forward on this, and if we want to piggyback on it, we have to make sure that we have a dredging plan that ties in with theirs. And that was the reason for going forward with the article a couple of years ago.
Right.
Don wants to make sure that we don't miss the opportunity.
And one of the things that Derek and I talked about, and sometimes I bring it up from another end, I see other towns were getting things done, and then we weren't. I said, does the town have a grant writer? And he said, no, there's not a person designated to do that. But as a taxpayer, I think for spring meeting, it would be advisable to get a grant writer, because a grant writer can, their salary comes back in multiples if you get a good grant writer. So, I say that. I need to see other opportunities come up. And as Derek admitted, there's a lot of technicalities, and a lot of things you just get ruled out on for just something that seems a little too bureaucratic. But it's, a good grant writer would be something I would recommend, you know, for when you can fund it in the spring. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, we had one more. Welcome back.
Thank you, Sandy Slavin. I'm writing about at least four or five articles, and I'm going through this list here. There's nothing that says when there's a deadline for an article to be submitted for consideration in the warrant. If I take a look at what you have here for description for the date, there's nothing that says it's a deadline for a warrant.
The warrant closes on the 22nd.
So...
That's the deadline.
That's the deadline.
So, if I, the last time I can get anything to you is 6:30 Tuesday night on the 22nd?
Yeah.
I'm surprised. I thought you might want it a couple of days ahead of time, so you could see it before you put it on the warrant.
It would be nice, but the warrant's open until the warrant is not open.
Okay.
That's always been the way we've operated.
Normally, I've seen something that says the deadline for submitting an article was always been put in this description. It was missing this time, and I was confused as to when.
Same date.
In the past, it hadn't been, but okay. So, I have until the Board of Selectment Office closes on Tuesday to submit my articles.
Yes, when you say your articles, what are you talking about? Are you talking about CPC town articles? I mean, the preference would be to get them ahead of time, so we can take a look at them.
Normally, I do, but CPC, but citizens' articles, so...
Well, citizens' articles, you know, they automatically come in right up until it closes. We can't keep those off.
They don't automatically, but that's when they're submitted.
Well, but I mean, once, yeah, as long as they're timely submitted, which is basically before 6:30 on the night.
So, that's my deadline, is when the office closes on Tuesday, the 22nd?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if you're looking for things to do, you don't have to set the CPC articles aside. If you'd like to work on them in the interim, but that's when the warrant closes.
Anyone planning on submitting articles, I would recommend you don't wait till the last minute. For example, last Thursday, we had a fire alarm and had to evacuate the building. So, if you're waiting till the last minute, there could be somebody either absent at the, or anything that could happen. So, just understand, if you are waiting till the last minute, there is a potential you could not get them in at that time because of Murphy's Law. So, I think it's sage advice.
Yep. That much is true. Any other citizens' comments? Okay, board comments. Alan.
Okay, the other wonderful thing that we have going on was our federal market, FMR is they're called. Mike Jackman, which is Representative Keating's office area for this here. I'll just read some of this, so people understand why we're at and what's the problem. Initially, the, this is from Mike, after getting a response, which I'll read from the federal government, which you'll all enjoy. "The gist of the call was that HUD doesn't have enough data on the Wareham housing market to justify a change in the FMR designation, that any change would only be feasible if the OMB, which is an acronym, made a change to its metropolitan areas after the 2020 census." So, the 2020 census probably will not be in and analyzed till 2022. So, that's where it stood there. "They were not very cooperative in discussing much of anything." This is their response initially. "Wareham Town has always been part of the Boston metropolitan area for FMRs and income limits. While FMR areas generally follow OMB-defined metropolitan area designations, this is not the case for metropolitan areas in New England, beginning with the 2000 census. OMB based all metropolitan areas on counties, including those in New England region. This was a change from basing metropolitan area on towns and cities and allowing counties to be split among metropolitan areas. We tried to implement a county-based metropolitan area for New England in the fiscal year 2005 FMRs. This was not well received, so we went back to these towns and a city-based metropolitan areas. This continues to the fiscal year 2021 FMRs. Wareham Town is in Plymouth County, which has towns and cities in both Boston and Brockton metropolitan areas, but not in the Bedford area. We don't limit a county to only one metropolitan area. In fact, that in the Bedford has no towns in Plymouth County, means it would never be defined in such ways to include Wareham. FMR areas are based on geography, and clearly Wareham is not in the same geographic areas in Bedford. That's news to me. We make FMR area changes based on geography and commuting trends, which is what OMB uses with historical housing market considerations. FMR areas are not based on demographics. That's obvious. We cannot make this change to Wareham Town to New Bedford, because it does not meet geographic requirements, or to Brockton, because it does not meet our historical requirements." Now...
So, we'll take an act of Congress.
Basically, it would have to elect a whole bunch of new people, which is not a bad idea. I want to read off the towns that are in the Brockton area that are in Plymouth County, because Mr. Jackman and I went through, and we submitted this to them. Originally, when they wrote, they didn't say that New Bedford was not allowed. So, just to give you an idea, Carver, Bridgewater, Halifax, Hanson, Lakeville, Marion, Matipoiset, Middleborough, Plimpton, Rochester, West Bridgewater are all in the Brockton area.
So, basically, what they do is they come, everything on the coast is part of Boston, and then it doglegs along the canal to get to us.
They...
The western part of the county, going north for a ways, is all part of Brockton?
Yeah. And also, things are...
That doesn't sound any more, that sounds just as arbitrary as what they claim would be arbitrary.
If you go straight from Wareham, straight up, every one of the towns above us is in the Brockton area. So, their logic about this is...
Lacking.
Well, if we had to go to court, there's no way they could defend what they've done. So, somehow or another, we got into the Boston area a long time ago, and nobody really thought about it, and it's been there so long. So, we have to wait till the census comes out. We have representatives going to work on it for us, but we're looking at two more years of this.
Yep.
That's the best I can do.
Well, thank you for the work to get the answers.
Now, the other piece is South Coast Rail Project. They're going to have a presentation in New Bedford on the New Bedford Station, the line, because everybody knows that they've actually funded what they call Phase 1, which means they will be by 2022 or early 2023, there will be commuter rail from New Bedford and Fall River. There'll be a brand-new station in Middleborough, which replaces the Lakeville Station. And so, basically, from Middleborough, there's a direct shot down to Wareham on the old, old Colony Spur. I've talked to Representative Gifford to start to make some noise again, and I'm going to be going to the meeting on the 22nd to, again, lobby for the Wareham Spur to be included. It's not part of the project technically, because it's not in the specifications.
It's an easy add-on for them, though.
Well, it's virtually a no-expense add-on at this point, but...
That's what I mean. The tracks have been upgraded. They're just waiting for the trains.
It's all there, so that's where it stands with that as well.
Mr. Chairman, besides thanking Selectmen Slavin, Alan, can you thank Mr. Jackman for us? I mean, we just saw him the other day.
I already have. I apologize for not being in that meeting that I missed.
But he's been very responsive for anything we did.
Yeah, this was not easy. Most people, when they hit the first thing with the federal government, says, "See you later, don't bother us," they usually give up. So, he pursued really well on this.
No, we're appreciative to at least know what the game is.
It's just a matter of basically making friends, and, you know, when you ask someone to do something, they do it for you.
Yeah. Let's hope. Anything further?
That's enough of that so far.
Okay. Judy. Comments? Jim? You good? I got nothing. Let's see, we have appointments.
Could we go down to item 9E?
9E, update from the Charter Review Group?
Right, we have a town employee here who is present...
Oh, would like to get home?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Been here all day.
The other business is all internal, so we'll come back to it. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jackie Nichols. I'm here today as part of the Charter Review Group to give a report to you as far as where we're at. I'm going to make it short and sweet. We've been working our butts off. COVID stopped us cold for a while, but we got back on track. And as Judy Whiteside said earlier, we have scheduled a workshop next on the 14th at 6:30 via Zoom, at which time we will go through all of the proposed charter changes for public input and inquiry. And we have all of that information, as far as the Zoom meeting and everything, is up on the town website, and we invite people to join us and find out what we've been doing. As far as what we've been doing, up on the website right now, you will find a couple of different charts and graphs, and a red line, outline of the things that we have proposed changing, as well as a nearly perfect, nearly done copy of what we are presenting. We have put together some articles for the town meeting, which will be hopefully included on the warrant. And is there any questions?
Alan.
I did go through yesterday, because I was curious what was coming forward. When I looked, I'm red-green colorblind. Basically, I did not see anything. I went through the whole charter per se that was on the town website for the group, and it didn't have anything underlined or bold printed. Normally, when we do something like that, to make life easy for the residents...
There is a red line copy up there.
As of yesterday, it wasn't.
I can answer that. There was some confusion about which documents should have been posted, and until I could speak with Mr. Underhill this morning in person, because I wanted to make sure that what was posted in the town clerk's office as of last week was exactly the same as what was on the website. So, it had been there most of the weekend until maybe midday yesterday, when I had him pull it, and it went back up today.
Okay, because it was not there.
Just wanted to check, yeah.
The other piece is that I was hoping to see, you know, what charter changes are coming down the line that you've gone and been proposing. We know we had three or four that were held off from the spring town meeting. There's several articles that Jim and I had talked about, that I know of, that we have issues with, that we were thinking that, we didn't know whether the Charter Group was going to put them forward, or whether we might do it on our own as a selectmen, or there might be some coming through as a citizen's petition article.
Believe at this point, we are putting all of the articles through as the group at this point. Now, if there, if you want to join us at the workshop and bring up whatever questions you have, and maybe suggest an alternate way of doing that, I'm sure that we'd be willing to, you know, take a look at what you're looking at and work with you on it.
I'll go and take a look at the underline, because as of right now, from yesterday, I had no idea what changes there were.
Everything's up on the website now. And that's exactly why we're doing the workshop as well, so you can...
Okay, anything? Jim, any questions?
No, no. Thanks for the information.
Judy? Okay, I guess that was quick and easy.
Cool.
Now, remember, you're going to, as the requesters of the articles, you're going to have to come back and present to us probably on the 15th, I think would be good for you to target.
On the 15th?
On the 15th, because you'll have had, well, I don't know, are you going to have enough time to...
Well, the workshops on...
...input the changes?
The workshop's on the 14th, so if we get any input that we want to incorporate...
Then you would push that off till the 22nd?
Right. But in the meantime, if nothing comes up, I don't see that as being a problem.
We would have a meeting on the 21st. We have a meeting scheduled for the 21st to make whatever changes might have been suggested at the workshop.
Okay.
So, we know we're skating close, but the articles have already been written.
Yep. No, I understand that. And, you know, the only reason I'm suggesting people try to do it earlier is to avoid the rush at the end, because that's how we make mistakes, is when we rush and you got them in, so... But if you're having your workshop on the 14th, if you don't have any changes, and you're, you know, you're ready to submit, then please do. If you have changes and you want to hold off, then just let us know, and we'll take them up on the 22nd.
Right. Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay, thank you for staying tonight.
No problem.
Appreciate the update.
Have a good night, Jackie.
Okay, going back on the agenda, appointments, reappointments, interviews.
Yes, we have some reappointments of constables. Stephen Cofflin, they're listed on the agenda. I've been through the paperwork. I know that these have been bounced back a couple of times for additional paperwork, and they now meet, in my opinion, all of the requirements of a complete application. So, I would move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Stephen P. Cofflin of Seven Fishermen's Cove Road, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532, to be a constable for the town of Wareham for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint by Judy, seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Charles T. Devlin of 4 Cobblestone Drive, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532, as a constable for the town of Wareham for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
We have a motion to appoint by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, 400.
I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Joseph C. Latimer of 37 Rockdale Street, Somerset, Mass. 02726, as constable for the town of Wareham for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Okay, motion to appoint by Judy.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Okay, that takes care of the constables. There's one more appointment I see here.
Yes, there is. It's an individual for the Council on Aging, so I don't see the individual here, but the paperwork was all in order. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint Lynn Wheatley-Boprey of 45 Michael Street, West Wareham, Mass. 02576, as a member of the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Okay, for the record, there's a recommendation from the Council on Aging for this person to be appointed?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Thank you.
Licenses and permits, second-hand dealer.
Yes. We, the office is working hard to catch up on things that were postponed or delayed or something by COVID. This is an application from Wesley United Methodist Church for a second-hand dealer license. Because it is a church, the fee has been waived, which has been our procedure and policy in the past. I move that the Board of Selectmen grant a second-hand dealer license to Wesley United Methodist Church, 462 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571. This license is granted under the Towns Bylaw, Division 2, Article 2, Section 1 through 3, and the applicable rules, regulations, and fees promulgated relative to second-hand articles. And the condition is, no articles are to be stored, displayed, or offered outside the described licensed premises, or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license expressly so provides, and it does not.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye. Do you have a point for this session?
Is it the policy for non-profits not to be charged the license fee?
Is it the policy for non nonprofits not to be charged a license fee related to application?
It's not a, it's not a policy. It's a First Amendment issue when it comes to churches.
Okay. I just, I was just wondering...
Yeah, it's a free exercise of religion, and their ability to do these things without being charged a fee for them is protected by the First Amendment.
Thank you.
So it's actually not a nonprofit thing, it's a religious exemption from the fee. It's in the state, it's qualified in the state law.
Thank you.
Keep us out of trouble, so...
He's nodding approval.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was all part of the discussion back when the junk bylaw was amended, what was it, about five, six years ago, something like that? We had to determine who could be charged a fee, and we found out that churches could not lawfully be charged a fee.
Very good.
Not a fee for these, or for the signs in front of the churches, or any of those things.
Yep, exactly.
So it was an education for us at that time.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Covid-19 update, we're down to town business.
Mr. Chairman, I did not get the updated amount. We are in the green category, though, where it's been, we aren't in the low white, if you will. So once I get the updated numbers, I'll forward them to the board.
Okay, thank you. And just, you know, just a reminder, summer's over. I hope last weekend that people didn't do too much congregating, or if they did, that they congregated in a safe manner with their masks on. This virus is still out there. We're now starting to head into the flu season, which is gonna compound things. It's going to create a dual demand on health services, health providers, and everybody else. So, you know, we're all sick of it, but it's not sick of us yet, so please continue to take precautions. Refuse update. Want to talk about the survey?
Well, we sent out a survey. I got, received some constructive criticism on it, and, you know, if there's a, there's a couple, couple changes we can make to it, other than that, it's, I think part of it is, I'd heard from Mr. Slaven, he and I talked about too, not going down the rabbit hole, and I heard that.
Which rabbit hole? You gotta be more specific.
There's a lot. So we're trying to keep as simple as possible with giving the right information, I think is the best way to put it. So we'll make a couple tweaks of that, send it out, and hopefully get a, get a thumbs up, and then I appreciate everybody that's been helping with it, so.
Okay, any comments? Alan, Judy, Jim?
Just, just so you know, I believe we're meeting with Carver tomorrow, in Carver.
I texted Rick and I'm hopefully hearing back.
Okay, and I'll do the same with Selectmen Belbin.
Yeah.
And then we have a meeting in town here with this CMW about Marion's proposed withdrawal on Thursday at 9:00 a.m., is it?
Thursday, 9:00 a.m. here. It may be a little muggy, so maybe I'm not gonna be in, I'll ask if maybe one of the...
The AC's going.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're making, we're moving forward in trying to get things in order.
Yep.
And sometimes it's like herding cats, but...
Large cats with large claws.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll talk with the town administrators, Sullivan, later.
You go.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Accept a donation. You have somebody who's giving the library money.
Yes, there's a donation from a Mr. Paul Wright of 28 Hayden Row Street of Hopkinton, Mass. 01748, of $50 to be given to the Wareham Free Library. I move that we accept that on behalf of the town.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the donation, second from Alan. Motion by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Let's see, we have a vote to ratify a hiring. I understand that only the first name is still interested in the position?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. The, I would move that we ratify the offer of employment to Christopher Emsweiler, oh, as an EMT paramedic.
Motion to ratify hiring by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0, to ratify the hiring of Christopher Emsweiler. Welcome aboard. We did the update from the Charter Review Group.
We're gonna...
I understand that Judy, you wish to hold off on the fee schedule, because there's a couple of things you want to figure out?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that sort of struck me as I was looking at it for the 75th time, and I'm not sure I know why some of those things are on there, so I'm gonna take another whack at it.
Okay, we'll bypass it then. Let me know when you want it back on?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I will.
Review and adopt new application forms and fees for appointment and reappointment of constables. This is a joint effort, I think?
Yes, very much a joint effort.
Why don't you two tell us about your joint effort?
Both of us looked at different towns, and we picked the best of the stuff that was there to use as, as the new format. And we worked with the office staff to make it as simple and as, you know, the old KISS technique, keep it simple, sweetie. So we have two different forms. One is for the reappointment for a one-year term of the constable, which has only three pages, but it includes basically bomb-proof instructions and a form that is bomb-proof, as well as a remittance form, which is bomb-proof. So there's really no excuse for missing out on what's been missing out. For a new constable application, there's slightly different instructions. They're, again, bomb-proof, and, again, it's a joint effort, and it's, you know, you don't reinvent the wheel. I think the other thing that we have talked about is that there never has been a fee for these, and I'm, I would recommend a $50 fee for a reappointment and a $100 fee for a new appointment.
Do you want to wait until we do the entire fee schedule?
No, because we could, it's not on the fee schedule at all. If you want it...
I don't think we can do that by what the town, what the agenda says. It doesn't say setting a fee for this.
That's why I was pushing it off.
It says, "Review and adopt new application forms and fees."
What I have here in front of review and adopt new application fees, one day licenses, review and adopt the application fee, oh, sorry, read it the wrong way there.
Yeah, look at item G, it does say...
Yep, it does. My error.
Say fees, so...
Sorry, looked at one line below it.
It's there.
Yeah, we...
Well, it's, it's... Jim?
Are you, are you done commenting on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is a photo ID required by the application?
I'm sorry?
Is a photo ID required, you know?
No.
Okay, I think that would be important to put into the, to have acquired photo ID upon the application, new and or renewal. I spoke with the police chief, he didn't see any harm in having them review applications, because they may be privy to information where Cory Soree might not present itself on that.
So you would ask for a police department sign-off?
Sign-off, yeah, and that's something I wanted on the form, too, is sign-offs by the appropriate areas, on the bottom of the form for office use. I just think it simplifies it in the sense, if we look at it, you got 1, 2, 3, 4, and you're not shuffling through the paperwork to find it.
Yeah, so we could, we would add that right down on the bottom, yeah.
That's, that's one of the things I had recommended. Now, the fee, if you want to do 15 or 100, that's, that's fine. I was just gonna use the 78, 75 administrative fee that we charge, which is already created.
We don't use the administrative fees anymore.
But we have it on our fee list.
That's why I want to view that.
So I was just gonna adopt that. You know, amount of time, I'm not gonna, you know, debate on that. And the payment schedules. Now, what the law states, what the law states is that they make a quarterly remittance if they've reached a level of $500.
Up to 500, over 500.
Over 500, so they're only required to remit in October, by October 15th, for the entire year, if it's under that. So I don't think we need to send out quarterly reminders, once we've sent them the form at the beginning of the year. We'll just send them the form, and if they, by October, ask them to, you know, send them a reminder to remit, and then if there's been no remittance when it comes for time of appointment, then they don't get reappointed. And I just wanna, I don't think we need to keep sending information out to them every quarter, because most of them are under $100, $200, one or two may have broken a $500 level.
Right.
So, and they should know that by the original document we send out, and it's just less, less busy work for the office staff doing that.
Yep.
So I had made those recommendations, I'd like to see them instituted, and I did also talk with the Plymouth County Civil...
The deputy sheriffs?
The deputy sheriff, yeah, and it was, it was good conversation to find out what they do and the training that their, the personnel receive, going through, part of the police academy training in how to do it, and also...
It's a different level of service.
Well, yeah, and I think...
Constables are doing mostly, you know, they're doing local service for the most part, smaller litigation, you know, district court actions.
I think they can serve all the same things, if I'm correct on that.
Yeah, they can serve the same things, but they're limited as to where they can serve, where the deputies are, pretty much, they can serve statewide, I believe.
Plymouth County, they can serve.
Right.
Okay.
But they can serve any, any state litigation within Plymouth County.
Right.
If you're in Essex, you gotta use an Essex deputy.
And I don't know, I think the fee structure's the same, I don't know, and if you're appointed...
It's significantly more expensive to hire a deputy sheriff than a constable. A constable you can get for 50 or 60 bucks to do service. Deputy sheriff, you're looking, the last time I used a deputy, I think it was like 175.
Wow, for the same thing?
Same service.
Because I think the fee's set by the Commonwealth, but...
Yeah.
I'm, neither here nor there, I'm not gonna argue that point.
Yeah.
And an interesting fact I found out is that deputy sheriffs, part of the agreement is that if they're, a Plymouth County deputy sheriff, they're not supposed to be serving papers as a constable within towns within the county. That's kind of an agreement that they have when they do it, and this was talking to the woman who oversees that section, or the office administrator, very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
So just interesting, you know, talking with them and what they're doing, and I just thought I'd let you know. So those are my points that I'd like to see done.
Picture ID.
Oh, yeah, that's huge, yeah. Yeah, and also, you know, you could also just have, the sign-offs are everybody that needs to approve.
I mean, because the office staff, they use...
As long as they're gonna, someone's gonna sign it there.
Yeah.
So when you look at it, on that front page, is this on the...
Checklist, signed, checklist, signed.
Yeah, see, I was gonna put it on the bottom here, but if you want to put it on that page, that's, I'm good with that. As long as someone is gonna initial it, it's all been done, and the police department, correct.
Excellent. With those corrections?
Yep.
Can we go along with it, plus the fee of 50 for renewal, plus the 100 for new? That would be my motion.
That works fine for me.
Okay, we have a motion by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Thank you both for your work on this. I know it can be kind of tedious.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Whiteside.
But it sounds like it was interesting as well.
Yeah, it was interesting, actually.
Okay, taken care of. One Days, what do we got?
Okay, One Days. We had an 11-page application online, and that we were handing out. That drove me, the tree hugger, nuts. So now what we have is a color-coded, you can't miss it, bomb-proof application, and three additional pages. We are not copying documents that are available online, we have provided the links.
Yep.
So the office staff, again, has been extremely helpful in terms of formatting these documents so that they are easy for the office staff to use, and they are simple for the applicant to use as well.
Okay.
You've got copies of them in your packet.
Yep.
Yeah, the only thing that didn't come up was the color coding.
Correct.
Comments?
I'm good with it, it was one question I had, I think it's a third line down, one-day permit for all alcohol may only be issued to nonprofit organization, but then on the second page, maybe it's just my naivety, please check one, you have individual private party or event, all alcohol. So I just was slightly confused about that, and maybe it's just, again, my misunderstanding of it. But beyond that, everything was good besides that. I was just, you know, it stated, it didn't state it in one spot, but then it says, we'll issue a license for that, so that's, that was my question.
Okay, I think it's pretty, I think it's spelled out here, this is more the application, these are, again, the bomb-proof instructions.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, I see it, Jim.
One day, all alcohol, nonprofit.
Okay.
So that was my only question on that, because I guess a private party's a nonprofit?
Yep.
Good?
So I don't know if you want a motion to adopt it, but I'll make it.
What's on here?
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to adopt by Jim, seconded by Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
And just for the record, the fee had already been set at $100.
Yep. Yeah, you didn't mention a fee in here anyway, it was just the application. Okay, that brings us down to the last item under town business. Anybody have any 48-hour business?
I do.
Alan, Judy, you do?
Yeah, look, ahead, do you?
No.
Yes. Want to get permission from the board to allow the Affordable Housing Trust to have Attorney Bowen draft the deed restriction for the Latham Center. They're in and ready to go, and they need that done so they can submit it to the application, to HUD, for approval that it'll be acceptable. And we've been asking for this for a number of months and months, so we need to get it done. And the board is technically the authorizing body for commissions and committees to get approval for the utilization of town council, although I can go to him directly for advice. So we would like that done. We took the vote today at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting.
Make the request?
To make the request.
Yep.
And the money, you know, that way the restriction will be reviewed, recreated, reviewed, approved, and if any, you know...
Depending on which access to council policy you choose to follow, you can either ask the whole board, you can ask the chairman.
Well, this is the only one we have. So this is the one I followed, and actually, I think all of you are on the board. Whiteside Title Bomb, Tropiano Slaven.
Opposed, the recent one?
So that's the one I go by. So that's what I'm doing, because I've never seen anybody else ask, so I'm asking, and that's a process, that's what we should do, and I shouldn't be told otherwise.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion for access to town council on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust by Jim, seconded by Alan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0.
And may I quickly add that there's also a component to this by the community preservation, who also, so if that, if we could just have one document to include both, I believe that's, would be beneficial to the town, so the total amount from the town would be the $200,000, $100,000 from each group, and the restriction would be held by the town, I believe.
Yep.
So I've discussed this, and Attorney Bowen has all the pertinent information. If he needs more, we'll get it to him.
Nope, it's fine.
So.
Get that done so we can execute and record it.
So motion, second, everybody?
Yep, we're good. All in favor, say, yeah, we already did the vote, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, any other 48-hour business? None. Town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're basically working on what we're working on, so.
Okay.
There are a couple things that I think Mr. Bowen's been drafting some actions that will make some persons happy. I don't know if you wanna get into it, but.
I happened to show the town administrator a draft copy of the verified complaint that I have regarding Mr. Donald McMullen of Wareham Avenue. The health agent issued an enforcement order against him. I believe Mr. McMullen would have received it last Wednesday. And it gave Mr. McMullen 14 days to clean up that mess he has at the two properties on Wareham Avenue. Naturally, we live in hope that Mr. McMullen will be a good neighbor to everyone on Wareham Avenue and clean up. But based on past performance, as they say in the stock market commercials, past performance can be indicative of future behavior. So I don't expect to see him clean up. And so, Mr. McMullen, if you happen to be watching this show tonight, here's a copy of the verified complaint that I'll be filing in Plymouth Superior Court concerning your non-compliance. So that's what I have to say.
That's good to hear. The people down there have been long-suffering and, you know, the town through inspectional services, through the health agent.
Everybody.
On his case for a while. This has been languishing in the housing court for, since when, February, I believe, something like that. And the housing court is an extremely difficult court to do business in under the best of circumstances. You're lucky to get more than 10 seconds in front of a judge after they shunt you off to a settlement conference to waste three hours of your time. And it's the worst court in the Commonwealth to do business in. They're absolutely overwhelmed. The one thing I will say is right now they're not doing evictions, so I would have hoped they could be, speed up the process for all the other work. But that's not the case. Superior Court, it's more difficult to get in the Superior Court door, but the rewards for doing so in terms of how your litigation is handled are usually better.
And this has been for years, hasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
It's been quite a while.
It's been a saga.
And it's, it's too bad. And, you know, the stuff is over the fence and on the town property along, I guess that's 12th and, on 12th Street in the corner. And it's just, you know, it's one thing if you've got all that stuff on your own yet, but when you're spilling out into the street and you're affecting your neighbors, you know, like Mr. Bowen said, Attorney Bowen said, be a good neighbor, you know, respect your neighbors.
And part of this is, you know, I think they felt unheard and they didn't understand that there's, there's been actions and.
Right.
I think the only people that could be anywhere near as frustrated as the neighbors are is us because it's, we've been trying to fix this for them. We wouldn't want that near our own homes and appreciate what they're going through, so. Right, exactly. Yeah, no, it's nowhere near what theirs is. We're just, our frustration though is out the roof too.
To legally. I drive by. You still on, you going to a different subject? You still on town administrator?
Well, I think Alan had something to say on this issue.
If anybody thinks that we're overly cruel or harsh, I suggest they take a ride down to this particular house and see what's really going on there. Not only is it around the house, up and down the street, it's also across the street. He's got vehicles stored, et cetera. If I was living next door there, I'd make sure my fire insurance was extremely full coverage. It's just an accident waiting to happen.
And, you know, every town has, has these issues. There's always, there's always a couple of property owners that are like this. They just accumulate stuff. They don't wanna get rid of it. They're, they're anti-government, they're anti-regulation, whatever their reasoning is. And unfortunately, they, they haven't moved to, you know, Hudson Bay where they're not bothering anyone else. They're still in the neighborhood doing this, so. And, but they have rights. They're entitled to due process. You can't take their properties away from them. You've gotta go through the court process to get the enforcement and everything else. So that's, that's where we are. So it's not being ignored. And I appreciate Attorney Bowen and the health agents' work on this. You had something else?
Yeah, I just, I had spoken to Mr. Sullivan earlier. I see the courts over in Onset have been painted. And that's, that's nice to see, the pickleball court and the tennis courts, and they're starting to get some lines on it. So I thanked him earlier, just wanna thank him and get that thing moving. It's something people can do, even with the constraints of the COVID regulations, because it's not large group gatherings, I believe.
All right, that one, I believe that's tennis in which pickleball be is allowed under 3-1. It's not the close contact.
So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, anybody watching the U.S. Open might have seen some close contact with an umpire over the weekend. You've got the number one player in the world, you know, drilling somebody with a headshot, basically, unintentional. Guess it shows everybody can blow their call.
I missed it. I must have fallen asleep.
Okay, liaison initiative reports. Did you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Alan?
Today, this afternoon, about 4 o'clock, I had the Veterans Council, a couple members, Mr. White and Matt Stanton, Police Chief Walczek and the Assistant Health Agent Patrick McDonald sit down and meet about the Veterans Day Parade, et cetera. There's been some back and forth about what we can do, what we can't do. Everybody sat there and expressed what they'd like to do. I have to really compliment Chief Walczek for sitting there and explaining and taking his time very, with good detail to explain to both parties what can be done and what can't be done. So they're gonna basically have a virtual-type parade, et cetera. There'll be a couple of static displays, probably down by the monument out here in one over in Onset. And there'll be interviews of veterans and some information like that. It's the best we can do. It's been a tough year. It's kinda like a mail-in of what we can do, but hopefully next year we get back to what it is. But we just don't wanna sit there and not honor the veterans for what they've gone through. And the veterans' parades have been difficult because we're losing most of the older veterans at a high rate these days. So I was happy to actually get this together and get them all on the same page. And I was a little nervous because it never goes easily.
Well, just further in that point, that I, you know, there's no, there's no more important time than there is right now in this country to honor our veterans. And I'll just leave it at that.
So they'll be coming before the board, asking to come before the board and explain what the process and what they're gonna do. On the capital items that Derek asked me to get information, what's capital and dollar values, et cetera. Unfortunately, MMA felt that as an organization, they don't go outreach the way I asked them to. So I spoke with the Mass Selectmen's Association today and they said, Alan, you have, basically, you're the District 4 representative. You have all the names and emails, et cetera. I said, yep. So I have to physically go and contact 58 communities to get information for you directly myself. So I'll be doing that over the next week or so. Mass Municipal Association, Local Government Advisory Council, Lieutenant Governor, Mass Selectmen's, excuse me, Mass Select Board Association, name changed, all met today. Basically, I spent my whole day playing Zoom. MMA is going to have to move from their location in Boston because the people who own the building, from Spain or somewhere, decided they wanna build labs in the building because they can get more money. So.
They were in prime real estate.
They are perfect, really great real estate.
Yeah.
Yeah, building got sold. So we're looking for new space. We'll see what happens there. The MMA is going to be working on providing diversity programs for all the board members. And then after that gets done, they'll be providing the same program to municipalities and local elected officials. Annual meeting for the MMA, which happens every year in January, will be virtual this year. The only advantage is there's no hotel, no travel, and it costs no food.
No free pens?
It's $85 instead of the usual 150, whatever it is. The other interesting piece is nonprofits are currently allowed to hold annual meetings remotely, which was not available before. Another piece that's gonna be very confrontational and difficult is police accountability legislation that's going through the House and Senate. You know, there's, there's a lot of support for defunding, defunding the police, which is not on my page whatsoever. But the Mass Municipal Association is supporting legislation while the police chief unions are strongly opposing it. It's not gonna be pleasant going back and forth with this. This legislation allows for decertification of those departments that do not meet the new standards that are provided in these particular bills. There's limitations being placed on union contracts, which lowers the cost to the cities and towns, which is gonna be another fight. Civil service is also on the books there. And what they're actually, what's actually coming up is they're looking to make available the ability to actually leave civil service program, which is a major change. So that's, that's a big piece coming up there. It's in there. What they call qualified legal exposure is an issue for municipalities and employees. They have what they call qualified immunity exposure. The House and Senate, this is part of the bill. The House and Senate have taken different approaches to policing bills. Again, Mass Municipal Association supports the House version. We basically, as a selectman, we should be looking and seeing what this is because this affects our police department. And we can make comments and ask our rep and our state senator to what we'd like to see happen. As far as budgets go, we still have concerns of fiscal year '20 and '21. Probably have no action till sometime in October because the numbers and what the feds are gonna do, it's just, there's nothing happening. There's, there's no response between the Democrats and Republicans in Washington right now to try and get anything done. Unrestricted general aid, which is important to Derek, will be level funded for fiscal year '21. That's probably where we're gonna be. The Chapter 70, which is the school, there'll be a slight increase for '21. And that's where it is there. The state has announced the CARES Act funding available in the second round in October. Of course, with us, we get through Plymouth County, that's our own. We've already got a fairly good check and we're looking for a few other things. I think Derek is gonna be proposing a, asking the board of selectmen to support a different request for some funding as well.
Yep.
Not available yet. The July and August tax collections, and I'm reading this all so the public knows what's going on. Actually, it was $124 million above a year ago at this time, because everybody was expecting things to still be terrible. So the collections so far this last two months were pretty good. But at the same time, the state sales tax, the meals tax is down 40% from a year ago. So people are not going out and eating and not spending the money then. And I was surprised, the lottery, which usually when the times are tough, lottery and liquor sales go up, lottery is down 10% from the same time this past year.
What was interesting though is if you went into some of the stores during, during this, you would see the lottery racks were wiped out. And I don't think they were regenerating the cards or something.
Just, it was surprising to see these numbers. House and, sorry. There's a bill coming in, it's on the horizon for the solar taxation, which affects what we do. But it's also about local permitting, which will have some help with us as well for control. Next would be the House and Senate passed what they call the Economic Bond Bill. It now has to go to committee because the two of them have passed their own version. They have to settle the differences. We have to watch out for the final language, could make, could make life difficult for us again. Senate version has an additional requirement for those communities in what they call the MBTA region. Well, there's 175 communities out of 351 in the region. I have a feeling that we might be in the region. You don't have to have MBTA service, but if you're close enough, you get zapped in there. And I believe we're gonna have to provide some type of facility for the MBTA as far as a, which is a cost whether we like it or not. So this is gonna be another unfunded mandate coming down the line. Cannabis Control Commission is revising their buffer zones, which is going to, in conflict with our current zoning bylaws. We're gonna have to watch that. And that will probably be September 24th, somewhere in there. It's coming down. Another piece that they're looking to pass, most likely will happen, we have delivery businesses operating now. So delivery license operators normally have to buy their product from the retail stores. They're changing it so they can buy it directly from the manufacturer. So if you have a delivery service in Wareham and they can get a better deal from someone in another town, we don't get the revenue from a manufacturer because it's being bought from another town. So that's also coming down. So they don't have to buy it from the retailer anymore. DEP is, has a comment period open for what we call the Comprehensive Waste Management Plan, which is our trash, which is a serious issue for the state. And they're basically opening, it's an open comment periods for towns, et cetera, to make comments, whether you're looking for help. And last, I have on this particular part, MMA will be sending out a cybersecurity survey. They need the answers back by early October. Local governors, council stuff, I was hoping, because the number's been consistent for about a week now and they're extremely low, that we'd maybe see something happen. But unfortunately, we're still in what we call Phase 3, Step 1. I was hoping that maybe we'd go to Step 2. The answer is no. Community Compact Program, which Derek knows about, is open to apply as of September 15th to October 15th, and there's $3 million available. MEMA has another program for infrastructure called BRIC, which is B-R-I-C. I think I actually spelled out the word brick. It's a federal program. We have to look at the MEMA site for the details of how to apply for it. The biggest part of the meeting was really schools, and it had to do with childcare outside the actual school itself during the school day and during the school day. They're only, as of right now, they're looking at probably having no more than 60% capacity for childcare outside the schools. And they're looking at expanding what they call an early licensing program. Flexible CARES monies for schools of approximately $200 million is available. So that's up to our school department to look for that, even though we have the state and Plymouth County versions. State aid, basically, the state is gonna provide online classes for upper education, which means grades 8 through 12, to supplement what's available. And that'll be available at no cost to cities and towns as well. State colleges are expecting only half the students to attend classes. This is expected to cause extreme financial distress to colleges this year and even more so for the fiscal year 2021. On early education, they have what they call a new easy education program is now in place. It's basically out-of-time schooling programs being looked at to increase the capacity. It will make it easier for places that are not regular daycare to actually open up and, and basically have something that can be accepted. These programs will be available during regular school time. State will provide remote learning through EEC. We will need to establish through a municipal CEO, which doesn't have to be the town administrator. You can appoint someone, what they call a municipal approving authority for approving remote learning enrichment programs. And again, see the state EEC website for details on this program. This is something they worked on the last couple of weeks. And because they're concerned for the parents, et cetera, what do you do with the kids, you know, with the system, with it on school, out of school? Well, if they're back home, you know, and, and learning remotely, the parents can't work if they normally work. So they're trying to come up with a way to, you know, alleviate some of these issues with the economic stress that's going on. It's good to see the state stepping up and doing this. The other piece that I'm concerned about is the, what we call the student, the school student count in October. They do it every year in October. They're gonna count from each school system. Unfortunately, it will affect the fiscal year 2022 Chapter 70 state funding because they will, you're basically gonna have lower numbers. And therefore, it's gonna, it's gonna have a financial impact on the school systems because of that. The state is actually gonna be looking at figuring out how to minimize the negative financial impact.
There's a lot of homeschooling going on and that's gonna eat into the numbers.
It's like, you know, you don't wanna send the kids to school. People don't wanna go to restaurants. It affects everything. The Mass Select Board Association, we had our meeting today also. We have a meeting on September 15th at 9:00 a.m. It's a Zoom meeting. It's up on the MMA, Mass Selectmen's Association website. All selectmen are invited to come and participate. The annual Mass Select Board Association meeting in January, which normally is during the annual meeting, will be about two weeks before. It'll be remote as well. And that's what I did for today.
Okay, thank you. Lot going on up there. Judy?
Just a, just a quick question for Selectmen Slaven. On that solar bill, who's, who's promoting that?
It'd be the, basically, I forget which agency, it's a state agency that does. It'd be the, uh, basically, um, I forget which agency. It's a state agency that does the bills. And there'll be a House rep and a, and a Senate rep who'll be one, that'll be sponsoring the bill.
Will it be beneficial to the towns, do you know? Or will it be beneficial to the towns?
I think, uh, one piece will be and one piece won't be.
Yeah. It's always interesting who the sponsors are and the promoters of them, um.
You know, it's one of these win-lose situations on each one of them.
The benefits.
But I think the biggest piece for us would be the, uh, possible control of actual solar sighting and stuff. It may help us restricting. Uh, there's a new, I think Derek has it, I sent to him. There's a new SREC credit numbers and stuff that came out, and I think, uh, it's not as advantageous as it was before.
No, it's cost us, uh, a couple thousand per megawatt.
Yeah.
So I think what people need to understand is when the SRECs, when there's a lower value, then the, the property lease owners get a lower, lower lease for their, their property and, uh, the town gets a lower amount in the pilot because the valuation of the projects decrease. So, that's, uh, it's just something to consider.
Hmm. Everything is basically quiet as far as the House and Senate, actually, but everything's ramping up and, um, because it's, it's kind of an election year and everything's kind of decided. There really isn't much competition. Uh, there's not a lot of pressure on any of the House or Senate representatives in the state of Massachusetts to sit there and be conservative. They can go out and do whatever they feel like. I hate to say it that way, but there is no pressure on them. So they may come up with some stuff that could be very difficult.
Yep. It is what it is. Going under our control.
None, none whatsoever. We're at the end of the chain.
Yep.
No, I, I kind of spoke earlier that, about the meetings and the, on trash and the Affordable Housing Trust, so, um, I'm good.
Okay. All righty, consent agenda. I guess it's time to pay the attorney. You have a motion?
Move to authorize payment.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained for zero zero. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We were waiting for Alan, but he didn't.
No, it's okay.
Couldn't pull the trigger. Motion to adjourn by Judy, seconded by.
I'll have to.
I guess so. He's asleep over there. Seconded by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
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 For zero zero. He woke up for that. We're done. Thank you, Wareham.